Good evening, welcome to the Milton Planning Board, meeting of October 22nd, 2015. My name is Emily Ennis, I'm the Chair, I'll ask the other members to introduce themselves.
Alex Whiteside, a member.
William Clark, Planning Director.
Julia Getman-Clark.
Tim Serwinski, Assistant Town Planner.
Frank Burris, a member.
Cheryl Tagheas, a member.
We're just waiting on one other member, who's running a little bit late, Mike Kelly. Let me run through the items for today. We have approval of past minutes, which we are going to be doing on Monday before town meeting, so our next meeting will be at 7:00. Next Monday, October 26th, and then town meeting starts at 7:30. The other item on our agenda for that will be to do the final vote, accepting the warrant committee's recommendations before we go into town meeting. Other than that, our next meeting would be November 12th, I understand there's at least one conflict, so we'll be discussing that at a later point in this meeting, because we also have to discuss the fact that currently we're scheduled for Thanksgiving and Christmas Eve, so keep that in mind. Citizen Speak is the next item on our agenda, yes?
Quickly, could the, is it planned, or are they, is she planning to send out the batch minutes, if you see any email?
I believe there's a plan for the batch minutes to go out, is that, you had--
Julia, would you send that email you sent me to everyone?
I sent them to you.
You sent them to me, did you?
I didn't send them to everybody, I thought you'd look at them first.
Right, but you sent one to Alex.
You sent me all the unapproved minutes.
And the ones, the one I had didn't have the June minutes.
So send--
The one you sent Alex to have the June minutes?
No.
Okay.
I forwarded them to you.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, so then everybody should get that for Monday, make sure you look at it, because you'd like to pick them up. So Citizen Speak, you're very welcome, Citizen Speak will be the next item on the agenda. We have one public hearing for tonight, that is the definitive subdivision plan for 33 to 41 Pleasant Street, that will start at 7:15, if you're wanting to comment on that, please hold your comments for that public hearing, not for the Citizen Speak. The other items on our agenda are the continued discussion and deliberation of conditions by the Planning Board for Thayer Nursery, that's a special permit and site plan approval. The Planning Board also has for discussion two zoning articles, it says for October town meeting, but these are really, oh, sorry, those are the zoning articles for October town meeting, the colon in there is wrong. We're also going to potentially be talking about nonconforming buildings or lots or both, that was a question that came up on that particular bylaw, and then the general bylaw for noise, so, and then, any other business after that. So as it's not, well, let's do Citizen Speak first, and then if we have any time remaining, we will go forward with a report from the Planning Director. Do we have any citizens who wish to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
My name is Phil Cho, I live in part of Detroit, Milton. My comments regarding what I perceive to be inconsistencies in the way the public hearings were conducted, let's say for 333 Brushhill Road, where the public hearing was closed, yet the board continued to hear from members of the public. And I thought, I didn't understand that, and I thought it was inconsistent, and maybe potentially unfair to others, who might be in the same situation. Additionally, I wanted to mention peer review. I noted that in 333 Brushhill Road, peer review was provided to the abudders by the applicant, and I was curious about why peer review wouldn't be a common practice, why the applicant would typically not provide peer review. I think it would be really important to be consistent and fair to all abudders and to all applicants, that's all I have to say.
Thank you very much, I will answer you in a minute, Mr. Joe Henning, I just want to make sure, is there anybody else who wishes to speak for Citizen Speak? All right, so in that case, Mr. Joe Henning, your first question on the inconsistencies, as you call them, for the, between 333 Brushhill Road, and I'm assuming you're referring to Thayer as the other one, 333 Brushhill Road is actually not the same type of application as some of the others are received, it is a site plan approval, and in the period between when the board had closed its public hearing, and when we were going to vote on our, on the draft site plan approval, if you remember, Alex was working on the draft, and we had a meeting in between, in which a number of residents came forward to Citizen Speak, and they said, "We didn't know this was happening, until suddenly somebody arrived on our property, and on what we believed to be the town's property, and started construction." And these are people who had not had the chance to speak in front of the person who had made the application, and to listen to that. So, we had them do a special citizen speak, right before our deliberation, so they would have a chance to make their complaints known to the person who had started that, started work, actually, in advance of us actually granting a site plan approval. The other major public hearing that we've been having recently, has of course been Thayer Nursery, which is a site plan approval and special permit, and that has been actually a series of two public hearings, one which started roughly this time, a little bit later last year, I don't remember the exact date, and one ended in March, when we had the solar panels fall off the roof of town hall, and then a second public hearing started up, and has continued until just a few weeks ago. At that, the public and the abudders have had every opportunity to speak in front of the applicant, and in front of the board, and give their points. So in those two respects, one did not have the ability to do that, because they didn't actually know what was going on, until somebody showed up and said, you know, started work, and in the other, everybody has had the opportunity to speak. So really, it was granting an unusual circumstance for the public to be able to be heard on 333 Brushhill Road. On the second, on the peer review, I note that Mr. Joe Henning mentioned that a peer review was provided to abudders at 333 Brushhill Road. I just want to clarify that any reviews that are done, whether it's by the town engineer or by a peer review, are provided to the Planning Board. The purpose of a public hearing for any of these, whether it's site plan approval, or special permit, or scenic road, the purpose of the public hearing is for the Planning Board to gather all information, including information from members of the public, which include abudders, as well as from the applicant, and then any peer reviews. In some circumstances, we have requested a peer review be done, in some circumstances, we've had the town engineer do the peer review, whether or not we have a peer review has often depended on how busy the town engineer is, and so in certain circumstances, we requested an outside peer review, because town engineer simply doesn't have the capacity to do it. So, those are my two answers on that, I see we have about five more minutes before the public hearing starts. Bill, would you like to give a quick report as to what you've been up to, I don't think we've had a report recently.
This board has actually approved a couple of definitive subdivisions in the short past, one was Mary Webb's Delane, the other was Beechwood. I've been going through the decisions, and now have to go back and deal with the developers on the issues that are outstanding within the decisions, some of it goes back to the Planning Board, some of it goes back to the engineering department. I've had the discussion with the engineers in town, and we now have to go back and see if we can get these things rectified before winter sets in. The special permit for Woodmere, the St. Pius Site, I've been going through the construction plans with their project engineer, and went through the clearing, the trees, the tree plans, the drainage plans, the engineering plans for the water and sewer connections to the street, I've been meeting with them several times out there, wanted to look at the specific trees that have been saved, the specific trees that they tried to save, but they lost one, it was already rotted out. Been going through the issue of the--
Was there a leaning tree that they, they stacked a lot of wood up against, so that it was, it was going at a 45-degree, was that the way it was going to be preserved?
It is, it was already leaning, and they did remove those things the next day. They're not up against it, and there is an orange fence around those two trees.
And did they pull it to an upright position again?
Can't do that, they can't do that, but it's an oak tree--
Maybe they're going to have to replace it.
They may have to in time. They did lose one of the big oak trees that they thought they were going to save, but when they went to do pruning on it, when they went in and grabbed the tree, the top of it fell off, so it came down. The Dupree House, the mansion that's on-site, when they bought the property, they had just taken out the oil tank, there has been an oil spill under the underground tank, so before they get too far with new construction sites, they're making sure they remove all of the fill up around where that tank is. That should take about another week. They have an LSP on-site every day to figure out how far, how deep, next steps, they've been in touch with DEP every day with it. The roadway is pretty much, almost completely laid out, packed gravel-wise. Two of the foundation holes that dug, the drainage holes are dug, they'll be filing for all of those permits, early to mid next week. The site itself is a giant bowl, so anything that happens, everything stays inside, so it's a nice place to have to work if you're worried about erosion. The trees have been taken down according to the plan, and move on to the 333 Brushhill, which had the same issue with trees. The construction management review, I was out there with the developer, and his site person, marking trees continually, looking at, you know, better ways to save other trees, they already started some of their ground clearing, they're getting ready to put in their drainage system. They've laid out where the road goes, and they are trying to find the optimum way to put the utilities in. Dealing with the East Milton Parking, meeting with the Chamber of Commerce, meeting with Mass Highway, meeting with Howes, Stein, Hudson, that's an ongoing process. Governor Stoughton Property, the, I met with the people from Polte, trying to get them to move along on their application to this board, and they are, they hired a new engineer, because of the complexities that the site offers. That engineer has been out every day last week, and I know that he's been out Monday and Tuesday of this week, on-site, doing more measuring, shooting lines, and doing the rest, so they're shooting for November to file an application with this board.
They should be encouraged to hire a landscape architect.
They did.
Okay, good.
And then I've been doing the stuff for Eul and Rink, trying to get the 25-year lease for this elect.
Sounds fairly busy. Thank you very much. And that brings us to 7:15, so we are going to start the public hearing on the definitive subdivision plan for 33 to 41 Pleasant Street, going to read the rules for the public hearing. So we're going to have, because this is the opening, we're going to have an introduction from staff, in this case, Tim. The applicant will make a presentation, we've heard it before, but not in this, as far as an initial presentation, but not as part of this public hearing. I'll allow questions from board members at that point, we'll take any testimony from members of the public, and then we'll identify outstanding items for the next meeting. When we get to the point where we take testimony from members of the public, I will read the rules for that. So, Tim, do you want to give us a quick synopsis?
Sure, Bill and myself conducted a technical review on documents provided by the applicant, a lot of just sort of housekeeping-type things, for cleaning up the plans and getting them ready, which you should all have plans, I've got a big copy over here for when we eventually get started, you can take a look at that. A few of the things that are, I don't want to say outstanding, but I would flag for your consideration is the issue with Lot 9, and the frontage for that, or the potential frontage for that. There's a, there was a frontage question on Lot 4, regarding the zoning bylaws definition of frontage, 80% of 75%, so that's something to take a look at, and I would just, there's been, the applicant's been before the Conservation Commission regarding a utility easement through the 100-foot buffer of the Vernal Pool towards the rear of the site, and also has been in contact with the Milton Historic Commission regarding the two existing houses on the site. I don't want to put words in the applicant's mouth, but, you know, they can, they can let you know about that. It just came in today, you should all have in your, in front of you, a memo from the town engineer, who had a chance to look at these and provide some initial comments. Unless Bill has anything else.
Bill, anything else? All right. In that case, welcome.
David. My name is Paul Sullivan, Smith Road, Milton, I'm here with the applicant.
Rob Celberti.
Yep. Regarding, I'll just quickly go over the Milton Historic Commission, I just heard from Steve O'Donnell, and on the second house, 33 Pleasant Street, it's all set, they're not seeking to preserve either one of the homes.
Okay.
So that's behind us. Regarding the easement, and the conservation, they prepared to issue an order condition, they voted on a site walk to approve it, and so that's moving forward. Back to the subdivision itself and the site, it's a combination of two properties, 33 and 41 Pleasant Street, it's approximately 3.5 acres, it has 258 feet of frontage on Pleasant Street, between Reed Steel Road and Randolph Avenue. This proposed subdivision road is approximately 375 feet, and it ends in a cul-de-sac. The developer intends to remove the two existing properties, and there's been some soil tests done in the roadway area, and they hit ledge at the cul-de-sac, probably nine to 10 feet down, and at the midpoint of the road, it was equally similar depth, so we don't anticipate too much ledge removal in the site, other than Lot 4, which clearly has ledge on that lot, and potentially Lot 9 or 2, I should say. The zoning for the property is, it's a mix of Resident B, which is, requires 20,000 square feet land area, and 100 feet of frontage, and the front section of the development is Residence C, which requires 75 hundred square feet, and 75 feet of frontage. All these lots will meet zoning. There is a list of waivers that were on the plans, the applicant's seeking, the first one is 6.1.10, which, under the subdivision rules and regs, a 50-foot right-of-way is required, and the applicant proposes to build a 40-foot right-of-way. The reason for that is, most of the homes, including Pleasant Street, that it intersects, have 40-foot right-of-ways, we thought it was appropriate for the area. He's proposed to only install one sidewalk in the subdivision, versus the requirement of two, it's a pretty short roadway, and we didn't think it was really necessary to have two sidewalks in it. In the rules and regs in Appendix A, it shows a 28-foot width for pavement, the applicant's proposing 22 feet of width, again, considering the length of the road and the number of homes, the engineer thought that would be adequate. And then finally, on the easement, the town requires a 20-foot width for utility easements, we only proposed 15 feet because of, the best area to place the easement was on the edge, the outer edge of the 100-foot no-disturb area, the Vernal Pool, so we were trying to eliminate the, how much area got disturbed, but we think it's still adequate for sewer and water to pass through it. The utilities for the subdivision would be town sewer and water, access from Pleasant Street, right in front of the subdivision. The sewer system would be a gravity system with an eight-inch main, and require through new, three new sewer manholes, we're going to provide an eight-inch water main that's going to go through the property, up the roadway, through the easement, up to the town property in the rear, that's called 51 Quarry Lane, and then propose to do underground electric, it'll be supplied by Eversource, and also, National Grid has a gas main in Pleasant Street, and we intend to extend that into the development. The applicant proposes a private way for the subdivision, therefore, he will set up a homeowners association to manage and maintain the common areas, primarily it'll be snow We will submit a draft to that homeowners association, to the Planning Board. We discussed earlier, utility easement for the town, for the, provide water up to the town access road for potential looping over to Quarry Lane. And regarding Lot 9, there was a title review of the 33-foot right-of-way that runs through the horse farm out to Randolph Avenue, and according to that research, Matthew Gaines and also some title work that was prepared by Cablack and Associates, it says that the property at 41 Pleasant Street has rights of access and right to improve the existing right-of-way. So the applicant is proposing to pave 100 feet in front of Lot 9, at an 18-foot width, to provide proper frontage for that Lot 9. Sewer and water is being brought to that lot through the easement that is proposed. And then regarding the size of the lots in the neighborhood, there were some questions during the preliminary hearings about these lot sizes, and as you can see, they're, they're pretty common in the area, pretty common to the abutting and the surrounding streets, and well within keeping of the neighborhood. And then we did a, an analysis of lot coverage growth, floor area, and open space, based on Lot Number 1, and as you can see, it meets all the requirements. There was a question regarding the elevations of the homes at Lot 1 and Lot 8, and the garages will be on the inner side of the development, and the ends of those proposed homes will have similar architectural detail as the front of the homes. And then, the applicant has proposed to plant significant amount of trees, evergreen trees, plantings along Pleasant Street, and along the abutting homes, on the right and left side of the development, and also street trees along the way. And then, we were asked to provide a construction timeline, obviously it depends on when the development is approved, but at this point in time, we anticipate, over the winter, maybe installation, removal of the two existing homes, installation of erosion control system, cut and cap the utilities for those, the two existing homes, and remove some trees, and stump the roadway, and rough lay out the roadway, and remove any ledge as necessary. The intent of the, the applicant is to remove ledge through chipping, hammering, versus drilling and blasting. And at this time, he projects that most of the roadwork will be done during the spring and summer of 2016, and the project would be completed sometime in 2017.
All right, in that case, questions from members of the board? Alex?
How wide is Pleasant Street?
Pavement or right-of-way?
Pavement.
I haven't measured it, I would guess it's 24 to 28 feet, in that range.
This, this street that you propose to be 22 feet wide is going to have to provide parking, or feed houses, because there'll only be a limited amount of space in the driveways. 22 feet is, is not adequate, in my, my view. I don't, I think that the idea of putting up four-to-six-foot spruce trees is not a good plan, I think that deciduous trees of a greater magnitude would be in order, and would be significantly more attractive. Getting to your Lot 9, this is not, this is, this is not a proper, a proper lot to be shown on a subdivision plan, because what you're basically trying to do here is create an approval-not-required lot on an existing way, and an approval-not-required means that subdivision approval is not required, and seeking subdivision approval for an approval-not-required lot is the wrong way to go. If you seek subdivision approval, you've got to show the street you're going to construct on that 35-foot passageway, and it has to be shown from Randolph Avenue, and it has to meet, it will be a subdivision road, and you're going to be asking a waiver of the 50-foot right-of-way to construct a street, and presumably you could ask for an 18-foot pavement width, depending on how many other houses use it further down the line, you'd have to put utilities in it. But, you haven't shown that. If you want to do an A&R plan, we have to determine that this way was in existence on February 10th, 1938, and we have to determine that it currently has sufficient width, suitable grades, and adequate construction to provide for the needs of vehicular traffic in relation to the proposed use of the land, and I don't think that this way is even constructed.
Oh, it's paved, about half of it's paved, maybe a little bit more than that.
Is it paved in front of this lot?
No, it's not paved, we proposed to pave it.
And it exists in front of this lot, on the ground?
No, we haven't paved it yet.
If it doesn't exist--
Is it a dirt road on the ground?
How can you say it exists in 1938?
What is the condition of the marked passageway?
Well, the road could have been, it was created prior to 1938, I haven't researched it yet, but I would guess it was, yes.
Well, in any event, I would suggest this to you, if you want to do a subdivision, you have to have frontage on a subdivision street, and this passageway is not a subdivision street, you've got to basically have another subdivision, at least you, by combining it into one big subdivision with two streets, you avoid the issue of a one-lot subdivision, so that would be to your advantage, but it's going to, you know, constructing a street in there is going to, is going to cost some dough, but in any event, the plan as it's shown, doesn't have anything about construction of a street, and therefore, Lot 9 has no frontage. And if you were to proceed with this plan, you would have to say, "Not a buildable lot" with respect to Lot 9. with respect to Lot 9.
Can I just go back to one thing you said at the beginning? Regarding the parking?
Yeah.
These, all these homes are going to have two-car garages with sufficient space of parking additional cars in the driveway, a minimum of that. And some of them will have double-decked lot driveways where you'd be able to stack four cars, so.
I, you know, maybe. I think that each of these homes will probably have at least three cars. And I, you see, no reason that Pleasant Street has to be overburned with parking for a new development that has inadequate parking of its own. So I'm, you know, I would want to measure Pleasant Street to see how wide it is. And I, I think that this street should be the same width. That's what I think, because...
Yeah, we could check the width of it.
And I'd like to know how wide the right-of-way on Quarry Lane is.
It's 40 feet.
It's 40 feet, is the, and so...
Almost every street in that area is 40 feet.
The only street would be Edge Hill, which, or Pleasant Street, as it gets into the street.
As it goes into Reed still, when it changes to Reed still, I'd say that right-of-way is probably 50.
50 or 60.
Yeah, that's pretty wide.
But they had a trolley car there, so that impacts the width. In any event, I'm inclined to, I'm inclined to go for the waiver if we get better trees. We get assurances on the appearance of these, the sides of these houses as they face the street, because that's going to be extremely important, that the appearance to Pleasant Street is an attractive one. And driveways opening onto the new road, and that's...
Yeah, we could show the driveways and the, and the length of the driveways, add that to the plan, so you could see that.
But I, I mean, you, we, as I say, they, the standard for a waiver is that you, it's going to, you know, be basically a benefit to the public. So I think that these issues that I, I suggest would benefit the public. And other members of the board may have other, other suggestions.
Do other members of the board have other suggestions or questions?
I have a question.
Brian first, then Cheryl.
I noted on the engineer's report, I don't know if you've had a chance to see this.
Just, it's the first time I've seen it.
They're referencing that the utilities, and it needs to be 20 feet. So be looking for your, your feedback on that, noting that they have to have a 10-foot separation. I, I'm not, I don't have the same concern necessarily about the parking on the roadway. What I, what I would suggest is, the engineer's report also suggests that we would consider, that we should consider making this a public way instead of a condo association way. If we were to do that, I would want to see more conformance with the, the proper widths of the roadway. I'd be looking more for a 24-foot roadway or a 28-foot roadway if, if we're going to have to take this over as a town road. And I did have one last question, just as a, as a suggestion. If this does remain a homeowners' association road, I don't think a bus will go down it. I'm not sure if a bus will go down it in any case. So if the, assuming that most of these homes will probably have children, I wonder about putting some sort of community bus or street, street bus stop at the end of the road. You know, that was proposed for a few of the proposals we've seen recently. You know, it was proposed at the former Boyle Estate on Brushell Road. So just a consideration and a suggestion. That's all from me.
Cheryl?
Yeah, on the, Alex, your comment about the width of the street relative to parking, where we don't have overnight parking on the street, are you assuming because it's a private roadway that the overnight parking is allowed then on the street?
I'm thinking of when someone wants to have a few friends over, and they park on the street, the road has to be sufficient to handle that, because otherwise, they're going to park on Pleasant Street.
So it's not necessarily the, the drunk car per house?
It's not the overnight, it's the day-to-day, normal use, you know, when they...
Tree law.
Well, a tree law, yeah.
Parking on the tree lawn, but is there?
Oh, I was thinking of the, the landscape services coming in and parking their trucks.
Can I get first? I do know that the engineering department just sent this over late this afternoon. So I know that Mr. Sullivan and Mr. Sullivain have not seen this at this point. So this is the first time they've seen it. So they didn't, they weren't prepared to address these particular issues. I think the issues in here about the bond for the construction of the road, I think the issue of the acceptance of the final product as a town road, if we wind up plowing it, we don't want it falling apart. If the homeowner association, something happens to wit and they don't take care of the road, it isn't the homeowner association and it isn't the developer that they're going back after. It's engineer, it's DPW and engineering that they're calling and saying, "But my street is a mess." They want to make sure that they're either protected by it, or they want to make it sure it's built to the right standards.
Would that include a snow pileup place, rather than push it all into Pleasant Street?
Uh-huh. I mean, that, that goes back to the issue of where do you stack it on a cul-de-sac?
Right, snow storage.
I did, I did look at it with engineering and did ask the question, couldn't should the, the bulb end be an island that could then take and hold a lot of that snow? Low vegetation, but have snow for the pileup there?
We could pile it up in front of Lot 4, too. There's plenty of space there. You know, the 22-foot width means we'll have less snow in the road, too.
But that means you're dumping snow from a, from the rest of the street onto somebody's private property, which becomes another issue.
No, the right-of-way, the right-of-way is 55 feet across, well, it's 100 feet across, so it's only going to be paved, you know, a little less than that, so there'd be some room there.
Other questions? Mike, did you have anything?
Can I just direct a question, Bill? On the plowing, if the town, if the HOA does not maintain the road, does not plow the road, is there a requirement due to fire for the town to maintain and plow it? Or is it just, we do it because we do it?
We plow an awful lot of private roads in town that we shouldn't be. But that is a issue that gets brought up about every third year by the selectmen, and it's, when it does come up, it's a, it's a nasty fight. I know DPW is looking at it, and they would prefer to have it fall under their Chapter 90 issue, count the road, and be done with it. It wasn't the narrowing of the road, but it's the construction and to make sure that the base of it comes up to be, meet the standards, that the drainage meets the standards. And having a bond there that says that it's built to those standards. I know they put in a few other things, like they would like to have stamped as-bills that can be filed with the registry upon completion. They want final subdivision as-bills. One of the other things that we talked about were real lot line on the major corners, putting in stakes, whether it's an iron pipe, just on the major corners.
Can you talk to us a little bit about Lot 4 and the issues with frontage on Lot 4? You brought it up, Tim, but it wasn't addressed at the beginning.
So the, the definition of frontage in, in the bylaw, and you'll have to correct me if I, if I mix this up. Frontage has to be, it has to, 80% of the required frontage has to extend in a parallel fashion into this, into the lot, 75% of the required frontage. So basically, you have to be able to draw an 80-foot line from the, the frontage and go into the site 75 feet.
Okay.
And that's straight-line frontage on a curved roadway, which, you know, the, the shape of Lot 4 kind of is, is odd in that way. And when, when, when the applicant sent in the, the sort of the, the final plans for the, for the public hearing, it's sort of, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure what they're doing with Lot 4. And so I would, I'd like to hear a little bit about that.
Well, what's the problem with Lot 4? I mean, they, they have the, they have 114.97 feet of frontage from lot line to lot line. And then they show the 75 feet, and then if you draw a parallel line to the, to the frontage line, I think that that should do it, shouldn't it? I mean, that's the 75, that, that's not going to be, you're, you're going to be able to get 75% of the distance in.
I mean, this could just be me, me not quite understanding exactly how, how the, how the definition operates. But I, I interpret it as where straight-line frontage from where the two sidelines of the lot hit the frontage, that's your straight-line frontage. And that's got to go, 80 feet of that has to go 75 feet into the lot. Which the way, the, the way that, that parallel line where those sidelines hit, just because it's kind of, that lot kind of sneaks around, you know, the, the, the spirit of, of the definition is there in this lot. I mean, it's not a, it's not a pork chop or a rat tail or whatever lot that we're trying to talk about. I mean, it's got, it's got frontage, but it's not kind of meeting the definition. Now, if, if, you know, the lines that they're drawing here, I mean, if that, if that works, I mean, that's...
They, they need 80 feet, right? They need 80 feet paralleling, 75 feet in, and then 80 feet they need paralleling the frontage line.
Right.
So the question is, and, and we've had it before, where we've got these, these trapezoidal or parallelograms that, that are not rectangles, but they, they, they angle in. And it's, if you angle in, I mean, if you take a, if you go 75 feet in from the, the common lot line with Lot 5, and go 75 feet paralleling the 75-foot line that's already there, then there's plenty of room to do that. Then you get, you actually get a, get a rectangle.
Right.
So that does it, doesn't it?
Well, I mean, it, it, it does, it does it in, in the spirit of it, but the letter of it says, where, where the sidelines of the lot meet the frontage, the line between those is your straight-line frontage.
Right. Which is the 114 feet. And then you, you show the 75 feet going in, and then you do a parallel line into Lot 4.
But you couldn't use the right-of-way.
Yeah, it's over the, it's over the, the cul-de-sac part.
One end of your line ends up out of the lot.
And while we're looking at this, just so people know, we're looking at Section 1 definitions of the zoning bylaw.
All right, I agree with you, Tim. This is brilliant.
Right, so, so, and I mean, and like I said, it's, it's...
They don't have frontage.
It's, it's a frustrating thing, because you look at this lot, and like, clearly, there's 70, there, you know...
If you did this, Tim, if you parallel, it doesn't work.
Right.
You go...
Exactly. If you jog it and you tilt it, like, it's fine, but, so I mean, like, you know, the, the sideline of this lot, and I'm, I'm sorry for the camera, but I mean, you know, the sideline for the lot has to hit this part of the cul-de-sac. And if it does that, and it goes in, you're all set. The way it is now, I mean, like I said, the, the spirit of, of, of the definition is there.
What does it, what does it say, where? It's under the definition of frontage, right?
Yes, it's page one, Section 1 definitions, number seven.
At least 80% of the required frontage, measured parallel to the aforementioned straight line, must be maintained without interruption for at least 75% of the required frontage.
It doesn't say that you can't use the road, that I could say.
Well, but that's not part of the lot. The road is not part of the lot.
The road is the road, to be, you know, simplistic.
Is it someplace, it, it doesn't bring up the road in that definition?
No, but you're talking about the frontage of the lot. The road can't be the lot. It's either road or lot. It's not road.
A road, that doesn't count. I, I mean, I was, I was, I was with you for a while, Paul, but now I've pointed out that the road is there.
There you go.
This is a, this is a...
Now, if you...
This is messing up the building envelopes, is what it's doing.
If you, if you cut it off, and this, you'll have to look at how much square feet have, you have here, so that the lot line for 4 actually starts here, you've got your cul-de-sac, maybe this is an unbuildable lot. Does that then fix the frontage? I think it does. So you need to look at how much land you're, so that bit where 4...
It'd make 100 feet.
Where 4 meets Lot 3, and then you've got that swoop around for the cul-de-sac, if that becomes an unbuildable lot...
It could be your snow storage.
That could be your snow storage, exactly. So that Lot 4 actually starts much closer to the ending curve of the cul-de-sac, then I think you get your frontage that way. Have a look at the measurements of that.
It would need 100 feet.
You'd need 100 feet, so now you have to look at that.
How are you going to get that? You're going to have to move into Lot 5.
Well, but Lot 5 has, has some room, and Lot 9 has some.
I understand that.
Yeah, but what...
But that's what you've got to do, because you...
You have to play with your geometry a little bit. That's what they're going to have to do, yeah.
I mean, it isn't an easy fix.
No, it's not an easy fix. But I think you start by not having that first part be Lot 4. I think you make that your unbuildable lot and your snow storage.
I think that that's, I think that's probably an excellent idea.
The road is 100 feet, though. If you look at the right-of-way, you're only going to get 100 on Lot 4. It's, it, it looks like it would fit if you cut that piece off and made it, either attach it to Lot 3 or...
You still have a big piece of roadway in the middle of it.
Well, it depends on how far into you cut, you cut the lot. I mean, you can cut it back here, but then you still need, you're right, Alex, you still need the 100 feet. I think you're going to have to look at how you shift that geometry around.
Of course, you know, the frontage we know on a, we go from the layout.
Yep.
We go in from the layout, not from the pavement.
Right, exactly. So you might be able to do it. The other thing is, I mean, they have room on Lot 5. Lot 9 has plenty of square footage.
They're going to have to...
So they have room to move the boundaries of 4, 5, and 9 around.
It's simply, I mean, they've got a, they're going to have to...
Yeah.
Go back to the drawing board on that.
I think you, I think your solution's solved, as long as he doesn't lose 5,000, losing the other piece of lot.
Right.
Right, exactly.
What's the solution?
Well, just put, just say the 100-foot frontage is right here.
This is not, that's not 100 feet.
It is 100.
You can't do the curve for the 100 feet, it has to be straight line.
Straight, it is straight.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah, you can do it.
You can do it, right there, right?
Got the room.
Now, if you move back 75 feet, you still have...
Yes, barely, but you've got the room.
More than 80% of it.
It has to be parallel to the frontage line.
It is. Yes, give me, give me this. This is your frontage line. That's your frontage line, okay? That's 100 feet.
Yeah, but you're using the roadway still.
No, no, no.
You're going parallel to the roadway.
That's fine. But could you do, could you do your 80 feet?
Why isn't it fine already? Because what Tim said is, when you move back 75 feet, you have to have at least 80% of that frontage, and you have to be on the lot. If you're over here and you move back 75 feet and you're parallel, you're no longer on the lot. You're off the lot.
You can go down there, though.
Yes.
Move that way. No, but you're not parallel with this frontage here. This is the frontage, you've got to stay parallel.
Being parallel, this is parallel down here.
Yeah, but it's, no.
You've got a, you've got a parallelogram.
I think what they mean by parallel is like this.
We've done this before. It isn't, you don't need a rectangle.
You need a square.
You don't need a rectangle. You don't need a square.
Okay, then it does work.
It does work. But you're starting to lose a lot of it. You're starting to lose a lot of acreage, so that's going to be the other challenge.
And then we'll quit up this.
But they've got, but they've got Lot 0, and they've got 32,000, so...
If you move back 75 feet like this...
You'd out of Lot 9.
Yeah, because Lot 5 has 21, so it's only got 1,000 of the move.
If you're using, if you're using part of the roadway, Mike, that's the problem.
You're all set then.
Not if you're using the roadway as part of your, as part of your setback area.
But can you use 20% of the roadway?
What?
Can you use 20% of the roadway?
25%, remember, it has to go back 75%, so you get 25% of it.
But you just, Alex, if, you're not using the roadway. You just said, "I don't have to move straight back, just parallel." Well, if I stay parallel, I can move over there.
Okay, go, you go up.
Yeah, we're doing the same thing, I have to say.
It's changing the building envelope. What the hell envelope, I'm in the building envelope. I ain't changing no building envelope. Stay in parallel, I'm going 75 feet in, and I'm staying parallel?
Yeah, you won't have to go back.
No, I think what, what you're saying is the setback line changes, and, but I still think it works.
Yeah.
I mean, looking back at it, you're set...
I do, I just think that it, that it changes it, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, it does change it, but it's...
It doesn't, but it doesn't make it unworkable.
It doesn't make it unworkable.
And, and Lot Four has 25,000 as it is, so it can afford to lose some.
It has some. I think you're just going to have to cheat a little bit.
Yeah, well, you're going to have to take some from Lot Nine and shift that line around a little bit, but I think you'd be fine. So, Paul, go and make that work.
Sure.
I think is what the board is saying, too.
And design a street in from the, uh, like, you're going to need a waiver, because there's a 500-foot rule on a street. If you were to try and do a subdivision street, there's a 500-foot rule, so...
Right.
You would not only need a waiver for the, the width of the right-of-way, but for the length of the, uh, street that you'd be proposing.
Any more questions from board members? Otherwise, I'll open it up to the public. Yes?
Do, does the town have other streets that serve this quantity of homes that are at this right-of-way and road, paved roadway width? Do we know?
Did you just ask how many, are there other homes on that 33-foot road?
No, I mean, are there other examples in town where we have a roadway of this proposed width?
I think that...
I, I'm just, uh...
Mary Repsulane is 18 feet with four homes on it.
This is eight homes.
But this is eight homes on 22 feet, right?
I think it's 26 feet at Stone Hill Lane, or, isn't it 26?
That's why.
And that was, uh, we fought for 26, um, there, and that is a similar, uh, similar issue.
So this would, so this is, there's not a precedent, really, is what I'm asking for this width, I guess, right? I just want to understand.
Same number of houses. Actually, Stone Hill has a few less houses.
It's, it's twice as long the road.
It may be, but the number of houses served is significantly less.
That's five.
Five houses, okay. Anything else from board members? All right, if you two will step back, we're going to open up the public comment portion of the public hearing. I'm going to read the rules for that. Please wait to be recognized before speaking. Come to the table and give your name and address. Speak into the microphone. When you're done, please leave the table. All questions or comments must be directed to the chair. Speakers may not cross-examine applicant, board members, or other speakers. The applicant will be asked to respond to questions at the end of the public input session, and then we'll move back to figure out what the next steps are. So, does anybody wish to speak? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Greg Suzula, and I am in Abutter. I own 704 and 706 Randolph Ave. The property has five horses on it, and it has for a few years. There used to be up to 50 horses on the property, um, but when I took control of it, I opened it up to rescue horses and rescue animals, therapy animals. I don't charge anybody any money, it's all free. I pay for everything. I redesigned the farm so that the rescue horses would have large paddocks, and we only have five horses there. I don't know that we're ever going to get more than that. It depends on what animals are in trouble, and, uh, one of those horses is mine. It's a therapy horse. I suffer from an illness. It causes short-term memory loss, so I have some demands or requests that I'm willing to share the cost of, uh, if the developer will work with me. Horses are a very fickle animal, especially rescue horses. They'd, they've been abused, so they're very easily spooked. Tonight, I heard the developer talk about blasting. That would lead to a horrific situation. I'm not here to oppose, or to delay, or to cause any issues with the developer. What I need them to do is communicate with me. So I'm going to probably ask for things that nobody's ever asked for. One of them is going to be to communicate with me by email on a daily basis. If they're going to make noise, such as drilling or blasting, I will move my horses at my expense. I have a caretaker that volunteers her time to the rescue animals. We will move them to the barn, and we will lock the doors so that the horses are sheltered. However, if they're blasting, I will remove those horses, and by trailer, I will pay that expense. Hopefully, there's not a lot of blasting, because it's difficult to get some of these horses into the trailers, and it is traumatic for the horses. They, they've already been through enough, um, but I understand construction and development, so I will find a place for my, at least for the horses. I, I don't think that's unreasonable, and I think I want to continue to support the shelter that is proposed across the street, um, and any of the developments that's there. I, I'm going to ask the town or any other development that's, that's done pretty much the same situation. I, I wasn't properly notified for these meetings, but I'm not always around, so email will work. I, I did find out about the meeting. There was multiple meetings.
There was a pre-application, a series of pre-applications, but this is the first night of the actual formal application.
All right. I, I got a...
You haven't missed.
Okay. I got a meeting notice...
We had the pre-ap, yeah.
That, when I signed for it, it had already, the meeting had already happened. It's not a problem, because I know that these...
I made sure that Greg was notified. I sent you two.
Yeah.
I sent you one at Randolph Ave, and I sent you one at Blue Hill Ave.
Right.
Because I wasn't sure which one you were going to get.
I'll get both of them, because...
I know.
The, the mail department knows that, and that's not an issue. I'm not complaining.
Right.
Um, that's how you normally notify people. That's not good enough for me, when it comes to blasting or noise. I've had issues with, um, drilling and environmentals, and we did not have a good time up there. So, um, what did work out was letting me know so that I will get back to the developer on a daily basis, on an hourly basis. I just got this new fancy phone, and it has all my notes in it, but I'm not recording the meeting, so one, one thing I'm going to ask the developer is to, I don't know how to do this, but I would like a recording of every town meeting that goes on to develop that property, because I'm not going to be able to attend these meetings.
We, the, the town records them, so you can get that.
Okay, so he, if, I will pay for that, but I would like that on a DVD. Because of my short-term memory loss, I'm not going to remember this meeting tomorrow, unfortunately. It's the first time I've been out in probably a year, so that's the good news. The bad news is, I'm not going to remember any of you tomorrow. Well, that's the good news. Just in his case. Okay, but he can record that on DVD. I can't do that.
Oh, but you can get them all online.
Oh, 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 okay. Oh, I didn't know.
They're standing there.
Oh, good. All right, well, maybe Mr. Clark has a way for me to just get them, and I'll just review them, um, and take notes on them. This is the first night for my phone, so bear with me. Um, one of the things that I, I would like, and this would be at cost to the developer, we built our paddocks on as close to the property line as we possibly could, because there's nice woods there, and I'm sure that nobody's ever going to develop that, although that didn't happen, and I wasn't able to buy it from Frank O'Neil, somebody else bought it. So, um, I would purchase that property if possible, but I'm not going to oppose development. Uh, the paddocks, I don't want to move the paddocks. Uh, I can work with the developer. I believe somebody from the board mentioned, uh, a, a border of trees or something like that. I'm not going to tell them what, what to purchase, but if they could put a border of, like, arborvitae's, something, you're never going to stop all the noise, but what you are going to do is you're going to stop the visual from the horses, um, so something like that. Even if they purchased them, they installed them, I would purchase them after and have them install them on my property, because I'm going to want to have that border. They could also do something like install them on my property so that we have a border from the start. I'll work with them on that. If, if I have to pay for that, I will pay for that. The other thing I'm going to ask is, is that nobody goes near those horses, because they are rescue horses, and if they look like zoo animals, they're not. If you go near the horse, and they can go right up to the paddock, the horse swings its head, it will kill somebody. It will, it will certainly kill a small child, and I don't want any lawsuits up there. Any lawsuits. So, if, I will post signs, but I would want to educate the developer. I've done this in the past. It's been very successful. But I understand construction, and there's going to be delays, there's going to be changes. I need them to think of me, um, first, and let me know what the change is. I will get back to them immediately. They'll have my cell phone number, and they can text me, and I'm not going to hold them up a minute. I, I do not work. I am disabled, and, uh, I will work with them. Two years is not a long time for me. I've, I've lived in this town since 1980, 89, and I've had no issues. It's been a wonderful experience for me. It has been. So, I, I don't think that's unreasonable. I would prefer to buy the property, but I know that's not going to happen. I know Mr. Sullivan has been very successful at his developments, and somehow they go through, so I'm just going to be smart and work with him instead of oppose him. I believe that's everything, so I would like to, um, pretty much make this my last appearance, and, um, I, I don't know if you can make it a requirement, but I, I would like it to be a requirement, and I would like them to do it out of the goodness of their heart for the rescue animals.
Thank you very much. As you know, normally, I let everybody ask their questions first, but in this case, Paul, do you have anything you'd like to tell us about how closely you're going to work with?
Sure, I just want to tell Greg that we're not going to blast at all up there.
Paul, can you grab the mic?
Yeah.
Yep. Yeah, I just want to let Greg know that we're not going to do any blasting up there that we've already said...
Didn't they just say you were going to?
No, we're not going, no, we're going to rule out any blasting.
Oh, oh, okay.
We're going to do some chipping, but it's going to be on the lot that's furthest away from you. It's over here, there's some, some rock there, but, um, other than that, the rest of the lots, I don't believe we're going to have any issues, and we have no problem keeping Greg informed of what's going on, and, you know, avoiding, not letting anybody, engineers or anybody go on his property or disturb his horses.
I've had that issue before. It was resolved.
Yep.
Just communication's all I need.
Sure, that's fine.
And I now have a cell phone, so...
Yep, we have no problem with that.
And planting trees, working with him to plant trees as a visual barrier.
Yeah, we could create a buffer for his property, sure.
Would you want to put that on my property or your property?
Uh, maybe I could meet you out there, we could see where the lot line is and see what works better.
All right. I am, you have just enough room, but I, they have to be further, far enough back, because the, the horses will eat them.
Sure, yep, that's fine. We can work something out, whatever works better.
Yeah, but it's before the vernal pool, so it would be still on my property.
Yeah, it'd be outside the 100-foot, uh, non-disturbed areas.
And we would need your machine, and then I would put the horses away while you would put the, uh...
Yeah, we, we plan it in advance and work it out.
Okay, so you guys can work this out.
Sure. Well, that's what I'm hoping, you know? I've had good luck in, I've had all kinds of, um, coordination and, and just, just nothing but happiness in the town of Milton.
Good to know.
It's a great place to live. We still number three?
Yeah.
Number two? How can you beat that?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Does anybody else wish to speak? Please come forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Brian Walsh, and for 30 years, I've lived at 56 Pleasant Street, which is, it's on the, the maps here, just outside the property.